...for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, have a seat. We're going to the microphone.
Ronald Knut.
Present.
Kenny Hall.
Present.
Bonnie Armman.
Here.
Trevor Stone.
Here.
Ronald Glassick.
Here.
Judy Haldeman.
Here.
Jason Donahue.
Here.
Judy Kutzler.
Here.
Mayor Tony Priseth.
Present.
And Mason Smalling will be absent.
Here is your person present. Will you step up to the microphone, state your name? And your concern.
Hi, my name is Sharon Gaisitz and I do live in the borough. Um, I asked this question several years ago and nothing got done, so I'm gonna revisit this. When is Dewey Avenue between Twenty First and Twenty Fourth Street going to be made a one-way and parking on one side only? Do you wanna know why?
Why?
Yesterday, there was an accident on Dewey at Twenty Third and Dewey. A traverse SUV was parked in front of their house and some girl driving at a rate of speed had to be better than twenty-five miles an hour, hit the rear end of it so hard, it jumped the curb and ended up in their yard. Now, that car's totaled. And the police were there, I asked several different questions. I asked, um, did they check if she had, was drunk? They didn't smell alcohol. Did she have, um, was she on drugs? They didn't know, they didn't see any. Was she on her cellphone? There's no way they could tell that. I said, well, how about how fast she was driving? We can't tell if she was speeding or not. If she's doing twenty-five miles an hour, she wouldn't have done that kinda damage to a car, uh, she had a car. This was an SUV she pulled, put, hit so hard, it went in the grass. So, I mean, everything, uh, you know, any question I asked them, oh, and I said, are you gonna do an investigation on this? And I was told by the police, no, we would only investigate if somebody had died. So, why?
I'm sure they wrote an accident report.
Well, they weren't investigating. She drove away. Uh, my, my question is, why can't we make that a one-way? Because that, that road is like Indy five hundred. People constantly are driving fast, going both ways. People, if there's a, if there's a car parked here and a car parked here, everybody has to ride away. Nobody stops, everybody just keeps going, they, and they go through the stop site at, stop sign at Twenty Third and Dewey. They go through it at Twenty Second and Dewey. On my way here tonight, I went that way, nobody went through that stop sign. But on Twenty Third, Twenty Second and Siegfried, guy came right through. And when he got to the light at Reichel, he went right through the red light, just right in front of me. And this happens all the time. I just find it, maybe if they made it a one-way, you would alleviate some of all this traffic coming and people would go another way, 'cause it's worse than Main Street. That's how many cars are on that street. So, that's my question, and I'd like you to look into that.
Thank you, we'll take that under advisement.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name's Alejandro Lotto, go by Alex. I live on, uh, seven twenty-two Washington Avenue. The, uh, neighboring property at seven twenty-six Washington Avenue has been vacant since I moved into my residence in, uh, twenty twenty-one. It's rundown, the porch, uh, the back porch, it's wooden, is rotted. The, the trees are overgrown, there's literally a tree growing out of the basement in the back, damaging the foundation. There's an abandoned vehicle in the backyard. Windows are broken, you could barely access the front door, uh, just because of overgrown bushes. There, there's windows broken, water damages visible from the exterior. I've seen animals, birds, a litter of cats living in there, in the residence. I, I, uh, I don't know how to follow up. I've sent emails online. Another neighbor said that somebody visited and would take photos. I've requested phone calls or email contact to, to see what the status is. I'm a reasonable person, I understand that you can't snap your fingers and resolve a vacant property. But I'd just like to know that it's being addressed and what steps the borough can take.
You emailed this week, correct?
Uh, about three or four emails, yes.
It is, yes, it was, they were forwarded to code enforcement, I will have him give you a call tomorrow.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
What's the address again, Brian?
Seven twenty-six, Washington.
Thank you. Washington.
Yes.
Washington.
Anyone else?
Moving on to opening of road material bids.
All right, at this time, we will open sealed proposals for road materials for the Borough of North Hampton, as well as North Catasackla Borough and North Hampton Borough Municipal Authority. And I think it's right that we use Leroy's little opener. Watch yourself. I, I know, I don't need to be seen today.
Yeah.
Terry, why are you moving away?
Workers' comp, you know, we don't need workers.
Vernon, that's probably, I see, I'm having trouble.
Just like that.
There you go.
Away from yourself.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying. All right, so we received one bid. Um, this is from New Enterprise Stone and Lime, who has had the bid for previous years. Okay. Let's see here. All right, so, for the borough, they have proposed two hundred for coal patch. Uh, I apologize, seven hundred tons of coal patch for a hundred and fifty dollars at the FOB plant, so that would be the first line. And then, the second one is at a hundred and fifty-four eighty per ton. It's on your bid spec sheet, all right?
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay.
So, two B stone, uh, twenty dollars at the FOB plant, and twenty-four eighty at, to the garage, or to any of the other facilities. Uh, two A modified stone, eleven eighty-five at the FOB, and fifteen twenty at the garage. Washed sand, twenty-two eighty-five FOB, and twenty-seven sixty-five at the garage. AS two or AS four anti-skid, sixteen fifty FOB, and twenty-one thirty at the garage. Super paved nine point five millimeters, uh, between zero and zero point three mil is seventy-eight fifteen FOB, and eighty-five fifteen at the garage. Same thing, nine point five, but from point three to three point zero mil is seventy-three sixty-five FOB, and eighty sixty-five at the garage. Then, um, super paved nineteen millimeter binder, uh, zero point zero to zero point three mil is sixty-six forty-five FOB, or seventy-three forty-five per ton at the garage. And then, last but not least, is the nineteen millimeter binder, but point three to three point zero mils is sixty-four fifty at the FOB, and seventy-one fifty at the garage.
And that includes freight that's delivered?
Yes, the one that would be delivered to the garage, yes, the second column. Stephanie, I will pass these down to you for... I'll have a different...
Is that, were we voting on this?
Well, it would be based off of solicitor.
Research, research.
Research, correct, but yeah, based off her approval.
Do we look at the, the, of last year and just see, like, like, not that, there's, this is the only bidder, correct?
Correct. Um, I will, I don't have it with me, but I can get it to you if you'd like to see, yeah, absolutely.
The bid bond is in the appropriate form, and by my recollection, um, the rates, I think, are gonna look fairly consistent with, with last year.
I believe so. Probably a little increase, but I wouldn't think anything too crazy. They've always been very reasonable.
Are we accepting these offers also for North Catasackla?
Uh, yes, yes, it would be, and for MBMA as well. Do you guys typically vote on it?
Okay.
I'm asked, I'm asked, do you guys?
I'm just, yeah, we did last year, but I don't know about, I thought it was in partnership that they were gonna get the same stuff, but we're actually voting on their, on their behalf, is that how?
As I recall,
Yeah.
Um, last year, and I didn't see the bids.
Sure.
I didn't see what went out.
Okay.
Um, but I recall that last year, each separate entity had certain amounts.
Correct.
So, each entity would be voting for their own amounts.
Okay, yeah, so like ours, this is on the side, we have the approximate amount that we're asking for. On the actual bid specs, there is, and they have included it in it as well.
Yep.
The different amounts that, 'cause I, I reached out to Kirby and to Travis from North Caddy, and they gave us the...
We'll be storing the stone for them, and we'll be picking it up then?
Uh...
Or how's that?
They, they store it, yeah, they, they get, they get, this is just saying that this is what we're going to get, and we just get it when we need it.
They store it themselves, maybe they can pick it up themselves, they dump it in their own places, and it's just, just a matter of prices.
Yeah, the prices are just in conjunction.
So, in fact, it looks as though... Let's see, two B mod stone, um... Those amounts, the rates,
Yeah.
are the sums of, of all three entities total.
Total, okay.
So, for North Hampton, you're looking at fifty tons of two B stone, two hundred tons of two A modified stone, two hundred tons of coal patch, fifty of washed sand, um, four hundred of anti-skid, the super paved zero to point three mil, three hundred, um... No, wait, where's the difference in that one? Uh, the three, the point three to three mil, um, none. The binder course, zero to point three mil, five hundred tons, and no, um, binder course, point three to three. So, not all of the things.
Are applicable.
Are applicable.
So, do we get a better rate by doing it with them, that's what we're doing?
Yeah.
Okay, we do, we don't need a motion on this? Do we?
Okay.
Okay, I thought we were... Need a motion to accept the, uh, proposal from... Who was the company?
Okay.
New Enter, New Enterprise.
New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company out of New Enterprise, PA. Do I have a motion to accept that proposal?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Stone, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Classic, questions?
Question, do, does the delivery to the garage come at the time of when, when we decide that we need it, or does it, for bidding on garage time, are also?
We, we won't have anything delivered to the garage, I think the delivery only comes into play for, we use their trucks for paving.
Okay, understood, yeah.
We usually haul our own stone, we'll haul our own coal patch.
Well, that's what I was looking at, to, to do that kinda stuff, is it cost-effective anymore with the cost of labor, time, the wear and tear on our trucks, instead of having them deliver it? I guess that's...
I'm sorry, it does look like, sorry, I'm just trying to pull up, yeah, I'm trying to pull up last year's, uh, numbers.
So, my question is, if we're approving, are we approving either way, and we'll pay on, we'll pay whatever we decide to get or deliver to the garage? Is that what we're deciding here?
They were deciding on the price, yes.
Yeah, but there's two different prices, there's one for...
One is for if we, we, we did it ourselves, the other one is delivered.
Correct, correct, I, I, I understand it, so we're not, we're not deciding, we're just deciding the whole, not just of what we're gonna do until we decide what we're gonna get for it.
Correct.
Which way we're gonna get it delivered.
Correct.
Right, okay.
That, that you are accepting those prices, whether you decide later on to have it delivered or pick it up.
Okay.
We could do just one the whole year, or we could do mix and match, or however.
Okay, perfect.
And not, not buying that much, they're just basing it on a bulk package of how much they can price that and give us a discount.
Okay, understood.
I think the anti-skid is probably the only thing that we really get delivered, because that goes to the shed.
I believe so.
Everything else probably gets delivered too.
So, if you wanna compare, uh, from, uh, the twenty twenty-three bid for twenty twenty-four, what it is, or? So, it's like, it goes like May to May. Yeah, um, coal patch was one forty-seven, and then one fifty, one fifty-five, so about three dollars and some, the three bucks. The two B stone was seventeen eighty and twenty-two thirty-five. The two A was ten eighty and fourteen. The washed sand was twenty-two eighty-five and twenty-seven forty, which, yep. It's only gone up for delivery. Um, there was no bid on the AS, on the, the next one, anti-skid. And then, the next was, super paved was seventy-six twenty and eighty-two ninety. And then, the next one was seventy-one eighty-five and seventy-eight fifty-five. And then, the super paved nineteen millimeter binder was sixty-five eighty-five and seventy-two fifty-five. And the super paved nineteen millimeter binder, the last one, was fif, uh, sixty-two ninety-five and sixty-nine ninety-five. So, for about a year and a half ago, it did, it went up...
Two years?
Yeah.
Cause you have, at the same time, you have about two, three bucks per, it's not bad at all.
Doesn't seem too bad.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request to attend LE Carry Course.
Uh, Chief Kadingo has requested Officer Robert Lindsay attend a LE Carry Course at Lehigh Township Police Department. The course will be held on May twelfth and thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and will cost five hundred dollars.
Do I have a motion to approve this request?
Motion.
Motion may be by Mr. Donahue, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ms. Armman, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request of North Hampton Area School District.
We have received a request for the assistance of the fire police in connection with the high school commencement services. They have scheduled three dates, Friday, May thirtieth, Saturday, May thirty-first, and Sunday, June first. The ceremony will be held in Al Erdesi Stadium at Friday, May thirty-first. In the event of rain, it could be rescheduled for Saturday, June first. I'm sorry, Saturday, May thirty-first, or Sunday, June first. The event will be scheduled from seven thirty to nine P M.
Have a motion for our pa, uh, fire police to assist the school district?
Make motion for the fire police to assist.
Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Knut. Any questions?
Just go with our fire police chief? Yes? Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request of the Zion Evangelical Lutheran Church.
Zion Evangelical Lutheran Church is requesting use of the Uptown Park for their church service on May eighteenth and June twenty-second. In addition to hold, or to, in addition to their request to hold their services in the park, they're also requesting a waiver of all rental fees.
Love a motion to honor this request.
Yep, motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stone.
Second.
Second by Ms. Haldeman. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to reports from committees, we'll start with the administration and finance. Excuse me, Mr. Hall?
Thank you. Well, it's one sweet, there were one oh six livestream views of the April seventeenth council meeting, end of report.
Well, that one's short. Building land and recreation, Ms. Haldeman?
Thank you, as of today, pool passes are available for purchase at the recreation center. The borough swimming pool will officially open on Saturday, June seventh at noon. Daily hours will be from noon to seven. Thank you to Zach Mako and his staff for holding another successful shredding event this past Saturday. It was estimated that three hundred and thirty cars stopped by to drop off shredding material during the event. Thank you to all the staff and council members for their contributions to a successful park cleanup day on Tuesday, April twenty-second. We will be scheduling another event for later this year, end of report.
Thank you, Code and Police, Mr. Stone.
Yes, thank you, uh, the annual fishing contest was a great success and very well attended. Thank you to everyone who donated and attended the event. Starting today, code enforcement is enforcing grass and weed on all residents' property. Uh, this will follow the new quality of life ordinance in the borough. To date, we have received a total of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars in rental registration inspection fees, which is a compliance rate of ninety-four percent. Uh, the planning commission will meet on Wednesday, May fourteenth at seven P M regarding the borough's participation in the rivers, diverse, yeah, River Central Multi Municipal Zoning Ordinance. Say that real fast for dying. Uh, environmental planning design will be at the meeting along with the, your office staff to discuss changes to the borough's zoning ordinances.
Thank you. Fire and health, Mrs. Armman?
Thank you. The last fire department breakfast will be held on Sunday, May eleventh before a summer hiatus. This will be a Mother's Day themed breakfast and will be held from eight to eleven A M. End of report.
Thank you, community center, Mr. Donahue?
Thank you. The community center held their monthly meeting on Tuesday, April fifteenth. Going forward, the community center will be working with a new food vendor. Within the next few weeks, the community center will be receiving a quote for a cost and to fix to refinish the floor in the main hall, end of report.
Thank you, sir. Public Works and Sewer, Mr. Classic?
Thank you. Uh, early last week, the Hlenchik exterior has repaired the worn and leaky portion of the bathhouse on the pool, on the pool roof. Uh, on Friday, April twenty-fifth, the Bigsby Solar Trash Compactor, I'm sorry, the Big Belly Solar Trash Compactor, which was donated to the borough, was installed on Canal Street Park. Should never miss that ma, that name, Big Belly. On Thursday, April twenty-fourth, the borough received a bucket truck from S M F, from Leighton Ford, uh, a small fix of repairs in the truck to go back to Leighton Ford on May fifth for diagnostics, end of report.
Thank you. Moving on to reports from, uh, council members, we'll start with Mr. Hall.
I don't, I don't, I have nothing to, uh...
Make something up. You're honored to support the school district at graduation.
It's, uh, hey, pray for rain, it's supposed to rain from Saturday to Wednesday, so... I could get out of this drought, so we can stop fighting fire, field fires all the time.
See, you did something.
That's it.
Mr. Stone?
I have nothing to report.
Duh. Ms. Haldeman?
Well, I, um, yes, I do have a few things, I, um, I, I wanna, uh, uh, thank the mayor and the, and the, um, borough manager and assistant borough manager. Um, I was able to attend the, um, chamber get-together on Tuesday, while I don't wanna take anybody's thunder here. Um, I, I wanna thank you for the opportunity, I had to meet some really, um, wonderful people who are very enthusiastic about helping our borough, and it was very, um, heartwarming to, to go talk to them and introduce myself and chat with them about some of the things that we're, we're doing in the borough, and, and to hear them say without hesitation, you know where we are, come find us. Um, we're, we're, we're happy to hear what you're talking about and, and we'll look into ways to, to help. So, that, that was great, um, I certainly was talking quite a bit about our playground initiative, and, and that was definitely, um, very well received. Um, I also wanted to bring up that, um, the, the church secretary from Assumption B V M Church had reached out to me. Um, she had an experience that she wanted to sing the praises of, and it was so nice to hear. She happened to be just, um, out running an errand for the church, making a large purchase of very, uh, heavy items, and a young man approached her in the parking lot and asked her if he could help her, and insisted that he help her, because she kind of quickly said, no, 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 and he said, no, I, I really can't, I have to help you, and ended up having quite an engaging conversation with her, and she asked him a little bit about himself, and it turned out, um, I'll make the long story short if I can here, it was Mike Adams from, um, the, our sewer department, and she could not say enough, and weeks later, when I see her, she continues to talk about this young man and the impression he left on her, and, you know, again, I'm gonna get on my soapbox and say that we're always quick to talk negatively about the bad situations that we have, and, and there are certainly things to be concerned about and need to be addressed. But on the flip side of that, to hear a positive about, um, a borough employee, and not even during a borough employee time, but to do that on his own, just sounds like we have, as usual, scored an employee who, um, is, is a really good person. And so, I wanna give him a great big shout-out and a, a great big thank you, 'cause I know she certainly does. And, and then last, I also, um, while the borough manager might say that I did very little at the, um,
What?
at the, uh, cleanup day, Megan, I think, will cover me and show the black paint that I was covered with, um, as I helped paint. Um, and everybody was there, again, the mayor, Mr. Classic was there, there were quite a few people there. I believe the chief of police climbed up and down a few ladders, um, but it was a really, it was a, it was a fun opportunity, um, and a great time. But again, I had an opportunity to chit-chat with, um, one of our borough employees, who also happens to be a volunteer firefighter, who was talking about, um, of the fire that had happened just previous to that, interestingly, they left to go to a fire that day, that was actually not a good one either, but anyway, he's a young man, um, but he, again, just struck me speaking with such enthusiasm and saying, I, we love it. And he, it wasn't just speaking for himself, 'cause I think he's got a few friends there, but to listen to him again, you know, kinda takes my breath away with, we can't do everything that the fire department always wants us to do, things are costly, but, you know, I think that anything we, we can do, and it to let them know what kinda support we can give them, and that may just be emotional support and appreciation, um, and, and going to the, to the breakfast and things like that, um, the basket, the, the, the bingos that they have, just because what they do, you know, they're taking their lives in their hands, and yet, talk about it. He was smiling and just said, I, I, I love this, and, you know, and then he goes to work all day on top of it, and, and did that with enthusiasm. So, I, I wanna again thank our police, our fire department, our, our police department, you know, all these people, our EMS, they're all such great people, and, you know, every time I have one of those experiences, it just strikes me like, wow. You know, there, there really are people in this world that do give back, and, uh, we don't, we don't know enough about what they do every day. So, you know, with the bad fire that just happened down in Newport again, they spent hours and hours there, I'm sure, and, uh, you know, no one was hurt, no lives were lost. Uh, that's just to their credit, so, thank you to all of them yet again, and that's it, end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Knut.
Oh, first of all, I'm proud of all firefighters and fire personnel who responded to the fire on Stark Street in the borough. This fire could have been a tragic disaster to the whole block. Keeping it contained in just two houses was a miracle. I am sorry, and a lot of people in the borough are sorry for the, for those families that lost everything. And secondly, the farmer's market starts on Tuesday, May sixth, at Municipal Park. It runs from three P M to six P M, end of report.
Thank you, Mr. Classic?
Excuse me, yes, thank you. A couple of things, uh, I would like to ask about Atlas Lane Seal and Paving. I've had two residents that ask about the se, the street, because it is breaking apart quite extensively. So, I did wanna follow up and see if, you know, Public Works could take a look at that, see if it's on their li, on their list. According to one of the residents, they called over two or three years ago about it, and obviously, it has deteriorated since then. I know we were coming out of some hard times of our equipment and things like that, but please look at Atlas Lane Sealing and Paving on that. Um, public address announcement is that today is World Password Day, so change your passwords. That was just a public address announcement, you know?
Shouldn't it be password, though?
Password.
Change it from password to password one?
Pass phrase, pass phrase. So now it's gonna be five, four, three, two, one.
I do wanna say that the manager and mayor meeting was well-attended, it was, uh, great comments by our mayor, by Brian, by Jerry. I thought you guys did a fantastic job, and I did feel that it was, for the first one, was a very nice, well-attended, uh, event. So, thank yous for what yous did and put that together. Just reminding again about the Cindy Miles Foundation support for the Four Street Playground. I think as a borough, when you see companies that wanna do things, please ask about supporting that. We wanna be one of the first or the few all-inclusive playgrounds in the area. I thank the, Mrs. Gaisitz, I believe, that came up for about Dewey Avenue. Hopefully, we can find out if we can make that one-way or not, and why we can't, just so we know for the future. I mean, I'm sure there's reasons that you can't just make a street one-way just because we want to. And also, for the gentleman on Seven... Um, and also for the gentleman on seven, seven twenty-six, um, Washington, thank you for bringing that up, and you just heard in, in the news, in the reports that the code enforcers now are starting about grass and stuff like that. I'm sorry that you had to call so many times, but please, continue to call, we need people that are taking pride in our neighborhoods and in our area. I am so sorry that it took so many calls, but I know we're gonna follow up with you, and that will happen, and I will follow up with that too. Uh, the park cleanup was a great event, the park cleanup was fun, it was great to get together with our Public Works and the Police Department and the people from the Fire Department, other councilmen, the mayor, it was just a great, well attended day, so I enjoyed that, looking forward to the next one in the fall, maybe not as, so breezy.
We'll try.
Thank you.
Paint splatters, end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue.
Thank you, uh, I'm gonna echo some same things here, thanks to the first responders for that fire on Stark Street, all the mutual aid companies, um, somebody should thank the neighbor for helping the other lady and save the dog. There are some neighbors that still care about their neighbors and everything, that's nice. Uh, donations can be made, I know for, up at Rita's for clothing for those families, and if you look on social media, there's links in that there too for that. Um, Brian, Ninth and Main, they'll travel like, can we do anything about that? Timing wise, southbound lane. From about the hours of four to five at night, it backs all the way up past Lawback Avenue.
That would, uh,
I don't know if we have any.
Do a study on that too, probably.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we mean, we can, we can certainly do one.
Yeah, cause I actually went around it and came down Ninth Street and there was six cars that went through before it changes.
We can, uh, I'll talk to Dave about it.
Okay.
Process of it and.
Unless it's just malfunction or something, but.
Call the telco and then we would have to run.
Maybe just check on it first, make sure that it's properly.
That, that one does go every once in a while, I feel like that one especially.
Yeah, cause the southbound lane is like, boom, green, red.
It is, yeah, if I go that way home all the time.
Yeah.
I go to Tenth Street now, go all the way around. It's rough after school hours or any time, pretty much after school till about five.
Yeah, if somebody swirled around on their phone, it doesn't help.
Mm-hmm, but yeah.
Uh, that's the end of my report then, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haldeman.
Thank you. My comments too are going to be redundant to some of the others, but I feel it, it's necessary to repeat. So I just wanna say many thanks to the Northampton Fire Department, mutual aid departments and other services I may be missing for their quick response and support to a devastating fire early Monday morning. I'm thankful there were no serious injuries, however, the families in both homes lost all their essentials belonging. With that said, and to help these families get back on their feet and rebuild hope, there are GoFundMe accounts, clothing, gift cards, or other donations are also welcome. The drop off areas are Rita's and Cakes on Main, both on Main Street. Or you may contact me directly and I'll make sure your donations get to the family members. I would also like to thank our community for the outpouring generosity, support, and love to these families that they already received. Secondly, I was also, um, attendance for the meet your mayor and managers, so a huge thank you to the Greater Northampton Area Chamber of Commerce for hosting that day, it was the community event, it was very, very well attended, and the open dialogue and connection between the residents and the local leaders. Thank you, was well received. End of report.
Thank you. Attorney Stewart.
I also was, uh, able to attend the chamber event this Tuesday featuring the mayor and our borough manager and assistant manager, who are, um, great assets to this community and the things going on in Northampton are phenomenal, it was, I was so impressed, um, to hear, and I know a lot of what they've accomplished thus far, um, but to hear some of their plans for the future, so, it was, it was a lovely event, thanks to the chamber, and I was proud to be there.
Thank you. Mayor Prestash.
Thank you. Looking back at the meeting on Tuesday, I wanna thank everyone who came to that, to put together a meeting that went far beyond what its title was. It was meet the mayor and the managers, but with the council men and women being there, it turned into a meet your borough family, as the fire department and police also attended. And it made it easy for everyone to just have an informal conversation with people you don't have that opportunity to get to meet and to talk to in that atmosphere. I know we have it already scheduled for next year, date to be announced. Uh, we, hopefully, we'll need a bigger venue. It was under advertised on, on purpose, we didn't know how it would be, uh, but because of the sponsorship we had, it is certainly going to be a welcoming event for next year, and again, uh, it's gonna be essential that council's there also because it is a part of a family event to keep this borough running, happy, and a great place to live. If you look at the initiatives, if you care, compare a calendar two years ago to a calendar we have now, the events we have with council teaming up with myself, the fire department, the police department, to do things as we did on Earth Day. As we did for the new tree lighting, and many more things to come down the line. It's a great sign to the people around town that there are more things to get involved with as a team, as a, a borough resident. So, we're very grateful for that. Uh, to the fire department for the Stewart Street, or Stark Street, excuse me, um, misadventure there. I happened to stop by Monday afternoon late and unfortunately, they were already tearing the house down. Uh, the family was there and, uh, I did have a chance to talk to them and they were just, their hearts were filled with happiness because of all the outpouring from the borough and for.
Planting a tree, painting when they painted, um, sanding the train, if you haven't known, like, that train is, was in dire need of it. Um, next year, we're gonna have to repair it, but this year, I, my daughter's been asking to go down every day now, because they were there probably now. Um, to go and play just because it's so new and so vibrant, and the work that Mr. Kdingo did with his massive height, putting up the basketball nets and painting softens and.
Didn't even need a ladder.
Didn't even need a ladder. Didn't, he just, you know, didn't even need to jump, he just stood there, it was impressive. Um, but thank you to all the council people and all the employees who dedicated their time and just prepared for it and prepped, and now we have a good foundation to know that we don't have to do just a half a day, we can do a whole day now, and.
Any means and weekends?
Every day. I think we actually have people out.
Some of us can't make it to.
No, volunteer the whole time, employees.
So, there are rest periods, they do allow rest, they.
They do, well, some people like to rest more than others, and say, oh, I'm waiting for things to dry, but, you know.
Let me throw some black paint on my shirt.
Megan.
Rachel, I'm impressed with what you're doing.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, other thing is, kinda, it was mentioned a little bit in, uh, uh, Councilman Stone's report, and Jerry kinda mentioned a little bit code enforcement. Today is May first, which is the new application of the quality of life ordinance for code enforcement. So, if you do get anything reported upon a property or anything, the approach will be a little bit different and it will be a little bit quicker of a process. Um, so it does very much, uh, hammer the point home about the title of quality of life and the way that the borough is to be represented and that the fines are quite compounding and they do build upon one another. Um, obviously, there is an appeal process for it, um, it is in depth, so I do highly encourage people that if you haven't read the new ordinance to actively go and look for it, because it does change up things a bit, where it is a very quick turnaround time and the fines become quite severe very quickly. Um, so, that is in effect today, so anyone from today forward, when you get a notice, it is going to be different than what you've had in, in years past. Um, so, kind of branching off of that, I, I did get your email and I did forward it right over to code enforcement right away, and like I said, I really do appreciate your email and the depth that you put into that email. Um, I appreciate the concern and the examples that you used in it and the reasons why, and providing that information. Um, and I will, I promise you that you will hear something tomorrow. Whether it's just a phone pho- a phone call to let you know that it's being looked into, or what code has been working with, but I want you to know your voice has been heard and that, I apologize in the past that it, whether or not it was responded to, but it will get one this time, I promise you that, appreciate it, absolutely.
Oh, I, one thing quick, just wanna follow up, I wanted to say also, encourage everybody to come to the May fourteenth planning commission meeting to discuss some of the River Central ordinance. Even, it's just mostly a discussion, so it's just gonna be kind of learning about, hearing about, so I encourage council people to kind of, if they, if they're available, to kinda come in and listen to it and put in some input.
I have something to add too, um, it just popped in my head, what's the status for the signage, uh, of parking on borough property?
Uh, Steffi and I have been talking about that, um, Brian and I have been talking about it, we are in the process of getting them made.
Okay.
And then once they're made and done, we can start putting them up, it's a decent amount of signs that need to be made, so it is not going to be a
Okay.
Cheap.
And you'll put the towing company on the signs? Cause I have a problem with that in Allentown.
The specific towing.
Like if you tow a vehicle on private property, okay? Does it say it'll be towed by Atlas Towing? Where do the people go to find their vehicles? So.
Okay.
Is that something I maybe need to address? And I also forgot to say, I just piggybacked off everybody. I'm so thankful for our fire department and our police department, all of our EMS services. I work in a job where you have to get volunteers, and it's very difficult. Um, and every time that firefighter and that police officer puts on that uniform, he has said, I will die for you. But yet we're quick to criticize and pick. So, remember that, remember that fire. Remember how those officers help people out of those houses, remember that. And one of the things I was taught in my career is officers are paid for what they have to do. But they may have to do, not for what they do, what they may have to do. And I'm gonna ask you, would you lay down your life for somebody? And, uh, so let's remember that, we're so thankful for all of our EMS services. Um, and all of the people that come out to help and assist. Um, other than that, that's all in my report. Now, we'll move on to approval of the bills. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Haldeman, do you have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Glassick, are there any questions?
Yeah. Yes.
Wait, I wasn't sure.
Well, I was thinking maybe somebody else wanted to step up. First one would be the E S I equipment for eighty-two hundred and sixty dollars.
Yes.
What is that?
Part of that was for the fire department, and part of that, I believe, was materials for Public Works.
Okay. I know it's a, it, I beat a dead horse here, but sometimes it, it takes that, sometimes multiple meetings and multiple months that we talk about the same company, but Frazier Advance, another fifteen hundred dollars, another hundred and twenty-six dollars, another ten dollars. Are we, do we have any idea what we pay them for a whole year for what they provide us with the equipment, so maybe get a total and I do seriously see when our contract is up that we shop that around.
Oh, a hundred percent.
Okay. Um, you don't need to answer, it, it just clearly says, but it does say for a period of performance. I don't understand that.
It's close, so it's, oh, yeah, so, they basically monitor a lot of the, the printers and copiers and maintenance all is included in that, um, which we have called them out a handful of times already this year, just because printers naturally going. Um, roughly, it's probably in the ballpark of over twenty grand for the year.
Yeah.
And that includes, that, so the ten dollars charge is just anytime we get any new ink or toner, so that is just basically the freight to get that shipped to us. The ink itself, because of the, part of the program is, the toner is free, it's just we pay the shipping of it. Uh, the one twenty-six fourteen, the way it's parceled out, is that is for the fire department's copier, and then the fifteen fifteen eighty-six is for every other copier.
All right, um, Harris Computer Systems for six thousand dollars?
Yes, that is part of the magic of James and Jerry, and Megan as well. Uh, that is part of new software that we are doing with Harris, so Harris runs our general ledger, our bill payments, um, how we can send out invoices to people. Um, and this new cash management software allow us to do all our bank reconciliations through our general ledger and bank statements, so that way we don't have to do anything by hand.
Lot more efficient.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Very much.
Um, the seventeen thousand dollar bill from Hulenchik Roofing, is that for the pool?
Yes, that was part of the budget.
Okay. Uh, Lowe's for a thousand dollars?
Uh, a lot of that was for finishing up on the detective's office, the new one.
Okay. Uh, Secure-X, twenty-six fifty-six.
Yeah, Secure-R X is the prescription plan for retirees.
Okay. Sherman Williams, eight thousand dollars, I take it that's the pool paint?
Yep.
I thought, I.
Pool paint and materials.
Okay, and then Waste Management for thirteen thousand, is that the sledge?
Yep.
Was it?
Yep.
Okay.
It's been, it's surprising that, if I remember correctly, that's actually high for a reason.
Yeah, because we had a little bit more randomly.
Right, so, but it's been far cry from when it was eighteen, nineteen grand, so we're doing a lot better.
The end of my questions, Mr. President.
Flat Food Company.
Materials, chemicals for the sewer line.
Oh, okay. Um, that was my own one, Mr. Glassick got my others, so that's good, we're good, thank you.
Feel free to step up.
I have a, I have a question pertaining to that, but I usually have numbers for the tech, for the, the garbage thing, is that complete, and do you have numbers of what was collected and what was out?
Oh, we, because we're getting to the stage now where it's getting slower, we're only gonna do it once a month, typically the second one, Megan and I agreed upon that that would be the best, just because we're now in penalty period, so, since we actually had so many people pay early and on time this year, like, we were about two hundred thousand dollars ahead. Because of that, we're getting not as much now, because of how great it wasn't before. So, yeah, so we'll have it on May fifteenth, maybe.
Any other question?
I do have a question, just because I was reading an article about P P N L's rates are gonna be going up, can we, can we start shopping anything around with that, or we're locked in?
We got that contract last.
We still have a contract.
We just started it.
That was a three-year deal.
That was, yeah.
So, we're in a three-year deal at the rate that we, okay.
Right. We, well, we, when we signed it, it was a fixed rate
Mm-hmm.
With, um, pass-through on capacity depending on the time of day, so it's like only at high levels with like high parts, so, we'll be fine.
Okay, cause I was gonna say, sometimes I understand that you can, you can actually call them to renegotiate, but it's kind of an extension and they kind of meld it together.
With R value, they probably would.
They won't do that.
They might, I mean, they might, but I can't imagine it.
But then you're locked in for.
It's also so soon that they probab- since we've only been since December, I believe.
Okay, I just thought I, I.
No, I, yeah, and it's, all of R two is done through A P P I, which I think is owned by Environ, through like statewide, so theirs is, they go out and go for it.
There's a, an early termination fee?
I'm sure there is, yeah.
So, you could shop around, you just have to pay the service fee.
Right.
Thank you. Any other question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it? I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion, I mean, Mr. Hall, second.
Second.
Mr. Canal.